Good evening, everybody. I take a motion to reconvene into open session. Motion, Mrs. Momalito, seconded by Mr. Scirolo. All in favor, four zero. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Alrighty, being that this is a budget presentation and hearing tonight, we are right up to residence remarks. It's a quick agenda. Seeing no residence remarks, we will move on with our presentation for this evening. Ms. Dunkel.
While Ms. Dunkel works her way to the microphone, I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to delve a little deeper into our budget process. I asked Ms. Dunkel to give the board an overview of where we are and what we know. I will share with the board and the community that I wish we knew a bit more. This is the most difficult portion of the budget process in that we are really trying to narrow down to specifics. We would love to be able to inform the board specifically of our need for staffing, programs, equipment, different resources that we need to provide to our students and community, and there are still a good number of unknowns. So Ms. Dunkel and the business office do their very best to project expenses, any increases, any decreases that we can find, and then advise the board as to where we want to request the community's support. What I'm going to ask the board to keep in mind tonight, as Ms. Dunkel goes through her slides, is that at the next board meeting, which is scheduled on Monday, March 14th, it's a rescheduled meeting, so please note your calendars for those watching from home, on March the 14th, I'm going to ask the board to do their very best to try to provide insight to the administration of where your comfort level is and how the administration should be building the budget in anticipation of a community vote and support. And by that, I mean where we will be interested in seeing the tax levy increase. We are looking unfortunately at an increase. It would be impossible to maintain our current programs and offerings to students without proposing an increase to the community, and we want to make sure that we're striking that balance between our district's needs and what we feel the community can financially support. So as we go through the slides tonight and prepare for our meeting on the 14th, please keep in the back here in mind that at the conclusion of our meeting on the 14th, we're going to be looking for guidance from the board in how to move forward in presenting the administrative budget so that the board feels comfortable adopting the board's budget. So tonight should be a start on that, and we would hope to draw closer towards conclusion at our next meeting. And with that, Ms. Dunkel, I'd like you to take the board and community through where we are today.
Thank you, Dr. Boster. Good evening to the board and our community members. Hold on. Martha?
Thank you. Okay. The first thing I just wanted to speak to are our budget goals that tie into our, actually, into the Board of Education, why is this moving? Our Board of Education goals. Some of the items that we discuss and look at within the board goals are pledges that we make to utilize financial resources made available through both the district budget and federal stimulus grants. And some of these items speak to making fiscally responsible decisions that allow for the maximizing of resources to support student programs and district initiatives. We continue to partner with parent and community groups to engage all stakeholders, and we look to minimize the impact on local taxpayers by using all available grant funding to address For the upcoming school year, our basic budget goals is to maintain all programs K-12. We have a continued focus on academic priorities and diverse course offerings to maximize student achievement. Continued enhancement for student wellness, PPS, mental health support, and DEI. We've continued growth of literacy initiatives, preserving class size limits, continued support for our AIS and ENL populations, the potential of increased secondary course selections, our continued expansion of technology initiatives, and again, maximizing the use of federal funds to offset any increases to the general fund budget, or the operating budget, we call it. Additionally, we're always looking to maintain our fiscal health. We always strive to achieve a no fiscal stress designation. We continue to fund reserves to appropriate levels, so they're there when we need them. And we focus on achieving our optimal Moody's rating, which we've discussed helps our borrowing when we go out for the bond and our tan. Source of funding, as the community and the board is well aware, we have some federal grants, and utilizing these federal grants has and will continue to allow the district to fund expenditures and programs without impacting the general fund. Some of these expenditures and initiatives include a new math textbook series, full-time social worker at each building, technology enhancements, and the director of MST. The program component, this is the third component that we're discussing throughout the budget, and this is the component that specifically deals with academics. We spoke about the capital component and the administrative component, and that deals more specifically with the infrastructure and the administrative operations behind the scenes. The program component deals directly with academics, dealing with the teachers and all the programs that affect the students' daily lives when they come to school every day. This component is made up of teacher salary and benefits, all instructional-related costs, as you can see listed here, we have textbooks, materials and supplies, equipment, professional development for our staff members, our special education program, which includes BOSI's programs, tuition that we pay for out-of-district placements, our contractual costs for all related services, as well as our transportation expenses. Thus far, our budgeted salaries for the 2223 budget include any retiree notifications we've received to date. The number on the screen is eight, but yesterday, I believe, we received one or two additional retirements, so there'll be a little bit more savings there. Our teacher retirement system percentage has an increase from the previous year, as does our health insurance. Our contractual and supply adjustments that we expense are based on a four-year trend. These include things like workbooks, techbook expenses. Our supplies are decreasing when we deal with cooperating contracts, both for New York State and our ed data program, and as the board is aware, we are now going into year two of the five-year contract that we settled with our transportation provider for last year. These numbers on the bottom are an estimate at this point, just to show the program component makes up roughly $50 million of the budget. Last year, it was roughly $49 million, so there's an increase right now of 1.8 or 3.7%. And again, the $50,749,000 number is an estimate at this point that will continue to change as we move forward through the budget process and figure out what the needs are. So far, our current budget update, our BOSI's budget numbers have been received from BOSI's and continue to be updated based on the programs that we're signing into a contract with BOSI's with, and again, most of that is driven by student needs. The retirement notifications I already spoke to. Staffing continues to be updated based on students' needs as well, and our costs related to health and safety concerns for staff and students. The tax cap calculation was filed with New York State as per law on March 1st. The current tax cap is at 4.0%, but again, that is subject to change once we receive our final state aid numbers. This increase for 4% equates to roughly $2 million from the previous year. Even though the levy is currently 4.07%, the administration is anticipating a recommendation to land somewhere between 2.5 and 3% with the approval of the Board of Education. This would allow the district to sustain current programs and services and keep our fund balance allocation and our reserve allocation both unchanged. And again, this is important, as we've discussed in previous presentations, to keep those numbers flat or reduce them when possible, because when we use fund balance allocation and reserves, we're actually deficit spending, because those numbers are filling in for revenue that we cannot obtain from other sources. So we're hoping to go to the, we're hoping to have the maximum flexibility that we can with the budget in order to sustain our programs, and we're working with the leadership team to develop a list of potential enhancements if that flexibility does exist. Some of the challenges that we're facing, the unknown impact that the governor's proposals are going to have on our budget, our technology budget continues to rise, the cost of hardware and software, as we're relying on more initiatives related to digital learning, our Chromebook initiative was advanced from grade six to 12 to K-12 last year, and the maintenance cost required for this program is growing in both the equipment and support staff areas. And as previously discussed, the transportation budget, we are now in year two of year five, with this year's impact being roughly 7% increase from last year. Some of the continued challenges, as we've been discussing, related to the grants, the challenge is continuing to utilize those grants to target one-time expenses while developing a long-term plan for the general fund or the operating budget. Because once the grant monies run out, the general fund budget or the operating budget will not have the expenses to support that, so it's important that we utilize the grants wisely now for one-time expenses, so we not hit with any large increases once the, excuse me, grants run out. The budget will continue to evolve as we progress through the remainder of the year. The goal remains to recommend a reasonable budget that allows us to continue providing the level of excellence that Elwood is accustomed to and our students deserve. Long-range planning, I can't say that one enough, is an essential part of the budget process. When we budget, we don't budget for one year, we're budgeting with multiple years in mind, so every dollar we spend or save today affects what we will have tomorrow. We must act now and be prepared for the future by maintaining fiscal health and preparing balanced budgets moving forward. And I want to stress that this is a team effort, the entire administrative team. You know, we ask the principals often to make decisions or have to make reductions over the past few years, so everyone across the district is chipping in, and it is a team effort to put the budget together based on the student needs. Our next meeting is March 14th. We provide as many updates that we have at that moment. Again, the New York State budget is not due until April 1st, and at that time, we will have final numbers. Our conversations with both the administration and the board will continue as well, and April 7th will be the last budget workshop and budget adoption. So again, please keep in mind, the Board of Education adopts a total budget figure, not the actual spending plan, but we do try to provide the community, you know, in an effort for transparency, to provide that spending plan as best we can, but there are typically last-minute changes that take place. Any questions? Or Dr. Boster, I don't know if you had anything to add?
Just really reminding the board of how we began the presentation, that we're looking for a target. It's really a backwards design. We would like to have as much financial flexibility to include as many of our existing programs, staffings, offerings in the budget as possible. We would prefer not to be in a position where we need to reduce offerings to our students in this coming cycle, and we feel we can find a balanced budget between the needs of the district and the community that will allow us to do that. The more flexibility that we can have, the more we can provide to the students, as well as plan for our fiscal health moving forward. We know it's a difficult balance, we know it's a difficult task that we give the board each year to try to measure what they feel the community will accept and support, but that's really where we are in the process. It's a backwards design. Once we are charged as administration to build a budget at a tax levy increase, the board feels you can support and you feel the community will support, we will include as many existing programs and new initiatives as possible under that directive. So were there any specific questions about the information that Ms. Dunkel provided this evening, or is there anything that the board would like to see that we have not yet provided?
Hello?
It works. It works. For the retirements, you had said we have eight-plus teachers that are retiring, are we doing a one-on-one replacement for those teachers, or?
Yeah, Mrs. Weiss, there's a significant savings associated with the number of retirees we have seen, and I believe the current number of teachers is nine. We have some clerical and support staff that have submitted their letters of retirement as well. I've advised the board of some that you will see on the March 14th agenda. We are losing some legends of Elwood this season, and we will celebrate them in June. The savings is significant. Those savings were included in Ms. Dunkel's overall numbers that she shared. Without those savings, we would be in a very difficult financial position. I would hesitate to present a budget that didn't call for reductions or didn't call for a much grander increase to the tax levy without those savings. When we have retirements, we look for positions that can be reduced due to attrition. We don't have them. Each of the positions that our teachers are retiring from are those that are essential to moving forward, particularly trying to maintain the current class-size offerings that we have in place across our district. Some of the teachers teach positions that they are uniquely certified for, physics, chemistry. Some of the positions that we will be recruiting are difficult to come by and may require flexibility within the budget to entice individuals to join our team at something greater than the typical starting salary, and I asked Ms. Dunkel to build in some flexibility in the budget to satisfy that concern. But I believe the direct answer to your question is, every position that's retired needs to be replaced.
Okay. And with those positions that are being replaced, obviously, like in general, what percentage would the difference in the salaries and benefits be from?
Sure.
A more experienced to a more novice? And I know you had kind of hit that some positions are specialized and require more than an entry level, but in general, is it a 40%?
I'm going to say the salary savings, to give you a general idea, is about 40%, but it's not a 40% savings to the budget, because remember, the benefits that the individual receives when they're hired are equivalent, there's no savings in benefits.
Right, but salary-wise, there is.
Yes, about, I would say, going from an experienced top-step teacher to a teacher coming in at the entry level in a typical circumstance is about a 40% savings, sometimes even more than that. But please keep in mind, sometimes it's offset by the cost of benefits in that some of our retiring teachers decline their benefits. There is no expense to the district other than the buyout. Some of our retiring teachers have benefits for a single individual, whereas a new hire will have the family plan. So it's very difficult to give you a concrete number of savings per individual, but Ms. Dunkel is estimating the total savings due to all of our retirements at several hundred thousand dollars.
Now, let me ask you another question. With the teacher shortage, does it require us perhaps to go above the, maybe normally, like five years ago, we might have just been bringing them in at entry level, now it's like supply and demand? We have to kind of pay them more to entice them, or?
The answer to your question is, it depends on the position. Candidly, we have an elementary opening. I have already received 150 resumes the first day we posted. It is highly likely that the individual we hire will likely be hired on step one, either bachelors or masters, depending upon their education. For a position like physics, in the entirety of the state of New York last year, there were only 20 certificates granted to teachers who were equipped to teach physics. Thus far in the process, we have received one resume. So for a position like that, sometimes the district's put in a position where we have to offer more than our starting salary, which is typically to recruit someone from another district where they may not be compensated as well.
Okay, but fortunately, we have that flexibility. I have another question, and then I'm done. When we go back to, I think it was page two, which is the 2223 budget goals, when we have maintained all programs K through 12, some of those look like they were covered under the grants. Do we have a percentage of what, or am I not reading that correctly?
No, you're correct, that some of the programs listed are covered under the federal grant, but one of the things that I'm going to ask the board and the community to keep in mind is, we are entering year two of a three-year grant.
Right.
So the board, forgive me, the administration will be charged with incorporating those grant-funded programs into our regular budget in the near future, otherwise, those programs will have to sunset. And there are many additions that we have brought in, and Ms. Dunkel named some of them, that are really having a profound impact on our district, and our task will be to present a budget to the board that includes those positions after the grant is exhausted. But yes, some of the bullets incorporate both budgeted items and items funded through the grant.
Do we have any idea, any like quantitative percentages, or no?
Well, the total grant, as you remember, was six.
Between the two of them, it's roughly, I think, $3.9 million, is that what you're asking?
Thank you. Nearly $4 million between the two grants, so as compared to our total budget proposal, that's $4 million over three years, so the percentage, I think you could. So the percentage, I think you could have a pretty good mindset. It's a much smaller percentage.
I guess I'm just looking specifically with the maintaining of these programs. Obviously, not the whole amount of the grant is used in that maintaining K through 12, but if we're including that in our budget goals and we're spending, we're using 60%, I'm just throwing out a number, of this year's grant money, so 60% of 1.3, then wouldn't it make sense that that wouldn't be in this year's budget? I guess that's where I'm kind of confused.
Debbie, Ms. Weiss, excuse me, I also want to, some of the programs and enhancements that we have are also supplemented by the grants. They are still funded in the operating budget, but the grant allows us to enhance it slightly. So some of the, on this particular page for the budget goals, what we tried to do is really talk about the items that are in the operating budget.
Okay.
I'll give you a concrete example, Ms. Weiss, that I hope will help bring some clarity to you and the board. We met earlier today, Dr. Hull, Ms. Dunkle and I, reviewing this presentation and going over kind of where we were. And, you know, one of the things that we have to look at very, very carefully are any increases to our full-time teachers, because that is obviously a larger percentage of our budget. Dr. Hull brought forward the question about the services we're providing to our ELL students. And currently, we are understaffed in that area. And with the influx of new students requiring services and the time allocations that we are required and want to provide to each of those students, Dr. Hull is estimating we will need an additional 1.5 teachers next year. We will need to replace one, the retiree, and we will need to add an additional 0.5. So that's an additional 0.5 impact to the budget, and that's significant. You know, a half a teacher's salary is, you know, approximately $30,000. So we looked both at the budget and the grant. And one of the things that we discussed with Dr. Hull, who is giving very careful oversight to the programmatic aspects of our grant, is, do you think there is flexibility within the federal grant to include the additional 0.5? We're not sure that that overflow that we have now will be necessary in perpetuity. So it might make sense to include that 0.5 position in the grant for the next year or two, and then reassess whether or not we can collapse it, or whether it needs to be brought into the regular budget. So Dr. Hull was tasked today with finding an additional $30,000 of flexibility within next year's grant allocation to accommodate a 0.5 ELL teacher. So it doesn't matter if that position is contained within our budget or the grant, it's a necessary position, we need to provide services for students. But it would make sense to me to place it in the grant because of the temporary nature of the need.
Right. And if that grant wasn't here, that would have had to come out of the budget, because that would have been a necessary expenditure for next year.
Yes, or more correctly, it would have to be included in the budget.
That's, I think, the question I was asking. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I guess I'm just, I'm concerned about this whole grant and general fund jockeying back and forth. I'm, listen, I always love low taxes. Historically, we continue to go under the cap. Inflation, it's a mess. Everything is hugely unknown. I just want to make sure, number one, we're going to keep low class sizes. We are, I'm sure uncovering things that need to be addressed coming off of what we came off of, and we have no idea what the future's going to look like. Right now, we're all getting back to normal, and things seem great, but we don't know what the future holds. The 2.5 to 3.0, you know, I don't know. I just, I really am concerned about long-term planning. I want to make sure that we just don't put some shiny number on to look attractive, you know, to pass the budget, which of course, we have to pass the budget. But I just want to make sure that we are going to address everything that needs to be addressed. I don't want to see things falling off, utilized under the grant, and then year three, we need it, and we couldn't plan for it because we went to 2.5, and we had an opportunity to go to 4.07, and I'm not suggesting to go to 4.07. I'm just, we have done great, our moodings rating has been great, we are in a good financial state. I just don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish.
Thank you, Mrs. Mamalito, and myself and the rest of the administration shares in that concern. As I mentioned before, we don't budget for one year, we budget for multiple years. You know, trying to come up with a reasonable levy, which is, you know, really the job of the Board of Education, you know, knowing, you know, what the community can support, is part of the entire budget process, as we're looking at the tax levy this year and what could the potential of the tax levy be for next year, or 2025, 2026. We always keep a multi-year plan in mind when we are preparing the budget, so we do share in those concerns. And additionally, as you brought up, you know, the grants and the spending plan, that's why we try to work more on one-time expenditures or short-term programs that we can utilize through the grants now, knowing that we're not going to have that money after 2023.
Do we have any projection as far as, like, the healthcare costs, as far as budgeting for that? I mean, that seems...
The, this year, the health insurance costs, we, the increase that New York State issued was 12% as of January 1st. We have no idea what it's going to be next year, and speaking with many of my colleagues, some other business officials, we are expecting it to be around roughly 12% again. We think it may be going up another year or two before it either levels out or starts to decrease again. I think a lot of that unfortunately has to do with COVID and all the healthcare that's been taking place over the last few years, but that's a number unfortunately that's out of our control.
Mrs. Mamalito, if I may just respond to your comment a bit, and I thank you for it. This is an experienced board. You've been through this process before, and those of you who are new to the board have been active members of our community. What would be in the best fiscal interest of the district would be to ask the community to support that 4.07% tax levy increase, which would bring additional revenue to the district. Ms. Dunkle has explained several times that each percentage of increase is equivalent to approximately half a million dollars. So the difference between going to the community with a 2.5% tax levy increase and a 4% tax levy increase is approximately $750,000. There's a great deal the district could do to support our students and our long-term fiscal health with that money. I'll remind the board that even in our best budget proposal, we are still relying upon deficit spending, fund balance, in order to achieve a balance. We still have not maximized our unallocated reserves to prepare for emergencies. The state is prepared to give flexibilities to districts this year in response to COVID-19 that we can enjoy. Going above that 4%, we're really happy if we get to 4% unallocated reserves. We're in a tricky spot. The best fiscal health of the district, in a combination of preparing for both tomorrow and years coming, would be to try to maximize revenue by going to the fullest extent of the tax levy. We, however, understand, and we know the board is extremely compassionate towards the local taxpayer, our homeowners, our residents, our parents. And that's why each year, there has been ample discussion to try to find that balance between what's in the best interest of the district and what's in the best interest of the local taxpayer. And I appreciate that this board has been so supportive of the effort to find that balance, and just not looking at it as a black or white situation. There's a gray in the middle. And I know it's a difficult task, but we are once again asking the board to help us to identify that gray. We would love to go out to the community with a 0% tax levy increase. Unfortunately, we would have to make categorical reductions across the board to the program and offerings to our students, and we don't want to do that. And we feel that would be to the detriment of our students, our district, and the value of the homes. We think that there's a balance somewhere between that 2.5 to 3% where we can put forward a responsible budget that helps us maintain our excellence and does not put us in a precarious position moving forward. It won't put us in the most enviable position moving forward, I want to be candid about that. There is a better position we could be in fiscally, but we won't be handicapping ourselves or knowing that we are setting ourselves up for short-term failure. There's a lot of unknowns, Ms. Dunkle has explained that, but we're doing our best to try to predict patterns and try to make a long-term, fiscally healthy decision. And I think we're there in the range that's being presented to the board.
I just wanted to, you mentioned, and I think you accidentally, I just want to clarify for the public, you said the difference between 2.5 and 4% would be 750,000. It's actually 1.5 million, correct?
No, I believe that each percent is half a million dollars. Correct, Ms. Dunkle?
Right, so that's 1.5%. Yeah, so it's a million and a half, 1.5 million, yep.
What? Say that again. Each percent of tax levy increase is how much money?
Roughly 500,000.
Right, so 1% is 500,000.
I was, yes.
I was thinking.
Yeah, I know, I did the same thing.
My apologies, that was my error.
And I agree with you, so, my apologies.
Well, you both made me question myself, so I'm glad we're clear. Yeah, the difference between a 2.5% tax levy increase and a 4% tax levy increase would be approximately $750,000, which goes a very long way in the governance of this school district.
Okay. Can I piggyback on something that Heather had asked? With the healthcare, Lorraine, you had said that last year it went up 12% or this year, and the next year, you don't know the percentage. What, do we have flexibility with the plans themselves? I know in, like, the private industry, like, from year to year, as part of a cost measure, they'll change, you know, the parameters of the plan. So whether they make the deductible higher, higher out of pocket, you know, they change the plan itself. Do we have that flexibility in the public sector?
Not exactly, Mrs. Weiss. Any changes to that type of coverage has to be collectively bargained and negotiated. It's part of the contracts we have with our bargaining units. One of the things that does change each year is the contributions our employees make to the overall cost of healthcare. And as the board knows, in the contracts we have asked you to approve, each year, the contributions our bargaining units are making has increased steadily over time substantially over the last 10 years. But that's really the only control we have over that type of expense.
Okay, so every time the contract, like a teacher's contract or a maintenance contract, whatever, that, let's say that's a five-year contract, we only have every five years to change those parameters?
We could negotiate at any time with our bargaining units. If Ms. Dunkle does research within the business office and is presented with a healthcare provider that she feels would be equivalent to the services we get now at a significantly reduced cost, we would be happy to present that to our bargaining units and incorporate the savings to the district. I'm not sure, I'm very confident that that doesn't exist right now.
Yeah, it just seems like it's an untapped savings. Okay, thank you.
The problem with that is, the insurance carriers get together, and they have a conglomerate on the New York teachers, and you have nice ship, and they have so many people that are bought into that program, and they're able to actually give the cheapest, you know, affordable rate, if you will, affordable. And we're very fortunate that our teacher bargaining unit has steadily increased, I believe is, correct if I'm wrong, are we going to be at 22% contribution at the end of this contract?
Yes, right now, the average increase to healthcare is over 20% in Elwood, and the average across state New York is closer to 10%. So we are pleased that our bargaining units have agreed to absorb some of those costs that we feel each year.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Scrollo? Good? So the only question I guess I have, it's more of a statement, is, as far as the state budget goes, it's anticipated to be, you know, delivered to us on April 1st, and typically, it's not on time. When that budget comes forth, are we expecting, anticipating, could, should, would there be any increase to state aid there? Or are we pretty concrete on the number that's been given to us at this point?
The, that's somewhat of a tricky question.
Million-dollar question, I know. If you knew, it would make the budget a lot easier.
And as we discussed in the previous budget presentation, the number that the state has publicized for Elwood is higher than what we're actually expecting, but I don't expect any decrease from the actual budgeted number, if that makes any sense.
And if I may add, Mr. Tomio, I will be in Albany this weekend, and I will be there beginning tomorrow and through Tuesday, and I hope to come home with some additional insight and clarity to provide to the board and community. But one thing that's very different this year is the governor's proposal is so across the board for the state, and I told, and we talked about how it impacts every district differently, but as entirety for the state, it is the most generous proposal ever made to public schools in the state of New York. So the concern when the budget is proposed to the legislature this year is that there'll be reductions from the governor's proposal. Each year, there's always the typical pattern of the governor makes a proposal, the legislature argues for a bit more, and we look forward to that increase before the final proposal. I think the greater concern among school officials this year is that there are no reductions to the governor's proposal. All of that said, I should also indicate that each of our locally-elected officials has some flexibility within their own aid, and there is that targeted aid, often called bullet aid, available to our assemblymen, our senators that represent Elwood, and we have had some indication that our locally-elected officials have some funding available that will be able to supplement our budget a bit. It's not earth-moving numbers, but it's certainly dollars that we will readily receive and be grateful and thankful for when they are secured. And once they are secured, we will be very happy to announce to the community and recognize our electeds for their generosity.
Jane, sorry, Mr. Tomio, just to simplify my response, I don't expect any fluctuation from what the state aid budgeted numbers are at this point.
Okay, and then I'm going to go back to Mrs. Weiss's comment, Mrs. Mamalito's comment, and I know I've rejected you about this myself. 100% the federal monies that we receive, we have a program that's currently in place, and it is anticipated that we will either backfill those programs when those monies disappear, or we will try to keep what we have in place in place with what's working. Is it possible, the next budget hearing, that we could, I don't want to say remove it, because it's part of our operating budget, it's part of what we're working with now, but can we see a side-by-side with the kind of, on the outskirts?
Exactly what information you're looking for, I'm not clear on your...
Anything that's been backfilled or subsidized by the federal monies not be in the budget. I know it's in there because it's programs that we already had and we're enhancing them, but in, I'm speaking to long-term planning here, because in the future, when this money's not here, we're going to have a hard time backfilling what we have. So I think it's important for us as the board to see the true number.
Yeah.
See what we're working with. We have no problem trying to keep enhancements, to keep program intact, and keep moving what's moving, but I think for the community and transparency purposes, I think we all owe it to ourselves to take a good, hard look at those numbers and see what it is that the future may hold.
Yeah, I think that Dr. Hull's planned presentation will bring clarity to that question, Mr. Tomio. Dr. Hull and the curriculum team are actively planning and scripting the presentation. Is it the April or May meeting, Dr. Hull, please remind me? This spring, the curriculum team is making a presentation to update the board and community on the progress being made in our grant-funded initiatives, and as part of that, will include the cost of each of those programs that were included in the grant. So a simple thing like adding the fourth social worker, that enabled us to have a social worker in each of our buildings, that's within the grant. We know that's $100,000 expense, salary and benefits, and that's something that if we seek to continue, will be a $100,000 addition to the budget once the grant sunsets. So that's a concrete example, and I will ask Dr. Hull to make sure, as she's reviewing each of the programs, we talk about what the associated expense was, which is part of the presentation, but we'll also have to talk about which we plan to keep in perpetuity and which will go away at the end of the grant because they were COVID response.
Okay, I think that's my concern, is we're flirting with a 2.5, 3% number, maybe, whatever we're going to, you know, derive that. My concern is, what will the future costs look like? And if we're at 2.5% today, does that hinder the ability to keep programs of enhancement that we may want to see in the future? And would 3% put us in a better position going forward? I think if we're looking at this in a long-term lens, we owe it to ourselves to really take a good look at what it is that's working. It's a year and a half now into these monies, we should know what's working and what's not, and what we want to keep and what we don't. So if we look really hard, then it's going to help us with this long-term plan that we're trying to do here.
100%. And to further answer your question, I'll be candid, I asked the administration to start a shared document where each member of the leadership team, in consultation with their teams in their buildings, provided us with a budget flexibility wish list, programs and services that they would love to introduce in their buildings and apartments that they feel would further enhance the student experience at Elwood. It is pages and pages and pages long, and right now, we cannot support any of the initiatives. And if I read you the list, you would like... And if I read you the list, you would likely show support for every single item on it, because they are well-thought-out, well-constructed plans that help fill needs, address student desires and choice, and would be wonderful additions to our program. Right now, we don't have the flexibility to introduce them. The more budget flexibility we're offered, the more we can look at that list, prioritize it, and include those proposals in the budget.
Perfect. And my last question, and, sorry, I say Dr. Hull. Ms. Dunkle, if you can get back to me on this one, this is not something I expect you to have an answer to right now. In the overall budget, is there anything that we can use our capital reserve for and put a referendum before the community to utilize some of the capital reserve funds that we have been able to kind of squirrel away in the last few years since we started that, to help offset the costs in which we're looking at right now?
Those are ideas that we are looking into, but I don't have any particular item right now, but I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, I didn't, there's nothing sticking out of the top of my head. Obviously, I serve on the Safety and Facilities Committee, respectively with Mr. Scrola and Ms. Weiss, and there's nothing that's been glaring, but if there's anything that we can chip away with to help our operating budget versus the capital budget, I think it would help us, so.
Yeah, we've had some conversations about that as well, Mr. Tamiya. There's nothing that jumps off the pages appropriate for that, but there are some ideas that we are further pursuing.
All right, well, thank you. I look forward to the next workshop. Any other questions? We're good. All right, Ms. Dunkle, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And with that, that brings us up to our adjournment. I have a motion to adjourn. Motion, Mr. Scrola, seconded by Mrs. Mamalito. All in favor? 4-0. Thank you, everybody, or thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Kern.